I'd like to call the peroral work session town council to order committee July 20, 2020. We have a roll.
Mayor Tewol.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seelak.
Here.
Councilman Cockrell.
Here.
Councilman Gillespie is absent. Councilman Holloway.
Here.
Councilman Meza.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Here.
Tonight I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session. And I need this added to the agenda, please.
We should probably have to read them, I think. Should we read them?
I think you just mentioned what their respective business discussions.
All right, I got it. I see. Expansion of existing business, specific legal matters, namely amendment down code, consultation with legal counsel, briefings, the staff, consultants, litigation of IT federal, or discussing consideration for appointment, promotion, performance, and salaries.
Does everybody agree to add it to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, we'll add three items to the agenda. Okay, the first item tonight is bridge, someone bridge epoxy application bid.
Yes, sir. In the package you see that we received some $214,000 from the total bid. Town set aside $169,000 plus. We needed additional $44,000 and we had it coming out of the two line item. BJ, is anything you want to add to that?
The recommendation for the $44,000 is to take it from the Prospect Bridge funding. Prospect Bridge, we currently have enough funds to complete the entire project. We have applied for VDOT revenue sharing on the Prospect Bridge. We expect to have an answer on that in hopefully October. If we receive the funding, then we'll still have enough to go forward with the project. If not, we'll have to look elsewhere for the funds, which is certainly a possibility as we move forward.
Now, will that have, that have to be placed on the agenda?
Yeah, so we'll have to do a budget amendment for it as well.
Okay, good. And we can do that Monday night?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on that one? Next item tonight is review of the FY '20 revenues.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we've closed out the fiscal year '20 as far as the revenues and frankly, very pleased with how things ended up turning out and the decision that was made to shift money over to contingency really paid off. BJ, I'll let you go ahead and go through your report.
Very good. So as Matt says there, we closed out June 30th our fiscal year. The closing entries have not been done yet, so these are still subject to change a little bit there. We have to do some accruals and some year end entries. The overall, all the funds look pretty well, with the exception of sewer. As far as revenues go, sewer fund did take a bit of a hit of $542,000. Will be a little bit more after the accruals. But the sewer fund balance is still healthy, even after the transfers we've done there. So I don't see anything that's really in need of adjusting. The general fund with a contingency of $136,000 over. Street fund, a bit of a hit there, $36,000 under the contingency. Electric fund, $16,000 under contingency. Water fund, $96,000 over contingency. Sewer fund, $542,000 under. And solid waste, $17,000 over. So all in all, we're not sitting too bad as far as our financials ended up for fiscal year '20. Like I say, they'll change a little bit there, but nothing too bad. Any questions on the revenues?
Yeah, on the meals tax, what percentage is it?
It was 99%. Meals tax came in at 99%.
99%?
99%. I am very happy with that and very pleased with that. I think a lot of that is attributed to some of what we've done on Main Street, also the businesses. They have, you know, adapted to this with the deliveries, with staying open. So we did fall there in, what was it, March and April, but then it rebounded come in June, which was very unexpected and very delightful.
Good. This second question is, we're over $96,000 water, but we're $542,000 in sewer water.
Why are they not the same? Because we have some heavy users on water and they don't use the amount of sewer. So that's one reason. The other reason is the connection fees. So the connection fees dropped off. The sewer connection fees are almost double that of the water, hence we've seen that drop off. We've adjusted for that in the contingency for next year. Obviously, we've lowered the system development fees for next year, or this year, sorry. I picked July 1st. So those contingencies have taken that into account as well as the not raising the water rates. Sewer rates have been raised, so hopefully we'll see that start to level out.
Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so under the delinquent utility accounts.
Okay.
I just want to make mention, does it look like then we had like $2,000 at the end of May, but then by June there was only 1,151? So does that mean, BJ, that we're seeing a lot of our utility customers that were delinquent being able to, you know, do a payment plan and getting back, getting back into the group?
Yeah, that was my next subject to talk on there a little bit, but yes, you hit the nail right on the head. So what we're seeing is, as far as payment arrangements go, we've made 286 payment arrangements since July 1st. On a normal month, we're going anywhere from between 400 and 500 payment arrangements. So we've already done more than half of that, moving into just half of July here. Our shut offs for non-payment, we did start those back up effective July 1st. So far this month, we've done 236 shut offs for non-payment. On a normal month, we do about 219, 220 shut offs, so we've already exceeded that amount just for the July. Our current delinquents, as of today, is $599,559.30. So just in the first half of July here, we've reduced our delinquencies about $58,000. Delinquencies may still take a few months to catch up. As you mentioned, we're doing payment arrangements and those are working out pretty well. We're doing payment arrangements as best we can with the customers on an individual basis. So our, I look for our delinquent accounts to stay pretty level for the next few months, maybe a little bit of a drop, but then as we move forward, they will, they will drop off and hopefully we'll get back down to our normal $400,000 month. I'm hoping that'll happen within the next three months as we approach fall.
So BJ, just to be clear, the May was 8:41 for delinquents. June, 658, and as of July, as of right now, it's 559, so it's about $100,000 off here, right?
As of 599.
Oh, 599.
Yes, 599.
Gotcha.
So yeah, so around about $58,000 reduction there, and I do expect that trend to continue, but like I said, it'll take some time. The, I think all of our notices have helped out significantly. The, you know, our radio ads, our newspaper public notices and words getting out, and we are having the citizens come in and make arrangements with us, which is really good.
How fast do people usually reactivate their account after we shut off, or is that just lost?
Normally within the day. We'll shut them off in the morning and they're on by that afternoon. About 90% of them have it on by that afternoon. Generally what we see, it's a situation where somebody has left the property. Landlord wasn't aware, and that's usually when we catch it, is when the service is not restored at the same time. Anything else?
Anyone else? Item three is franchise agreement with fiber optics.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What was typo on your agenda? It's LUMOS, L-U-M-O-S, not A-S. Have a franchise, franchise agreement. Doug, did you want to go over any highlights of a franchise agreement?
This is just a standard franchise agreement for fiber optic cable. They're going to pay, LUMO says it's a renewal, $25 per pole per year and $2 per foot for conduit use. I've heard and I've forgotten how many poles we've got. BJ or Matt, or David, David's here. Does anybody remember how many poles we've got in town?
I do not.
I don't have that.
For $100. Sorry.
I was thinking we've got something like 17,000 poles. Does that sound too many?
Well, we may have that many poles, but I don't believe LUMOS is connected to all those poles. I don't know how many LUMOs.
No, they're not, but however many poles they connect to, we get $25 for, and if it's underground, we get $2 per foot for the underground conduits to use. So we get a pretty fair amount of money from them, and most likely in the future, there will be more and more fiber optic cable that's used because it's a pretty efficient connector. So right now they're connected to the hospital, and as we see more and more high-speed usage of internet and whatnot, you're going to see more fiber optic cable, most likely. And I'll try to answer any other questions if anybody has any.
Doug, I'll just say that's just strictly the internet, it's not, has nothing to do with cable as far as TV or anything like that, is that correct?
At this time, no, but that may be something that changes in the future. As I said, I think in the future, we're going to see more and more fiber optic connections because it is so efficient compared to copper.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
Does this introduce a new service provider in our community, or is there a new one on the current one?
I think they're here before.
They're a limited service provider at this time, but I think they'd like to expand their footprint.
Thank you, Doug.
Yes, sir.
I'll do a paper here. Any other discussion on that? Not, we'll go to item number four, resolution to the Warren County School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rather than a resolution, what we found by Doug was just drafting a letter, not as formal as a resolution. I believe you got an advanced copy of the letter, letters before you tonight. See if you had any questions and suggested changes, any comments, and whether you asked the mayor to sign it and send it off or not.
I've read through it from time.
I don't have a copy of that letter, and I recognize that I don't, but without seeing it or not really sure, I probably am just going to reserve, I'm not exactly sure what it's regarding, but.
It's a good one, Lori, just trust me.
Okay, let's.
Jimmy, read it.
This school board or mine employer's Jake.
Oh, you probably have to read the book then.
Do you want me to go ahead and sign this before Monday night, or what?
Yeah, that was the idea, is to get it out and buy consensus as opposed to a formal vote. I mean, it really doesn't need a formal vote, just a letter.
No, I understand that. So everybody agreed to it?
Yes.
Okay. Lori, a forum here tonight, okay.
I mean, it just won't note that I was support or not. I'm assuming that in regards to the high school graduation ceremony, is that correct?
That's correct.
And is the letter showing support for high school graduation, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the same thing, Lori, we talked about last week. All does is lay the God rule, so.
Okay.
Can you see that she gets a copy of it immediately, Matt, tomorrow morning? Is it all right, Lori?
I'm waiting, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item tonight is social media, website.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Lynn has the actual letters with her tonight as well.
Okay, all right. Is that the official letter? Or, okay, got you. Okay. We're good. Item number five then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Todd Jones, who is the Town Park Royals PIO officer. Thought it'd be a good time to have him give a brief presentation about what's been going on since January, and there's been a lot of activity in our information office. So that I'll turn over to Todd, and if you don't mind, I'm going to, didn't dislike you a bit.
All right, everybody, thank you for the time to go over some of the stuff. As we discussed back in November, December, when we opened up this office, we do a review as to how things were going, what was happening, and at the same time, talk about what direction we need to take in the future. So we're stepping into our third quarter here in 2020, so I just want to review the last two quarters, the last three quarters of what's happened and what we've put in place, and then show you what we're planning and get information from you guys if you have more stuff you want to talk about in the future here. So primary goal that we set up was to build a communication bridge between citizens and town government and encourage the sharing of ideas and positive conversation. And we're actually making some good headway on that. We've made some adjustments to social media, some other things, as well as encouraging citizens to communicate through the public information office. It's working very well. We've got some, had some conversations with the press as well, and I'm encouraged as to how well that's taking place. First thing we needed to do was identify some staff and some resources that we had for, to help us address some of the social media aspects of this job. So we have Mary Allen, she helps us out quite a bit with social media, as well as Elena Patrice. Elena works for, owns a company called Social Status Incorporated. Elena helps us quite a bit with helping us interpret our demographics and our analytics as well as give us some direction as we move through things. She's kind of the expert in this and has been just a huge wealth of information. We've identified current platforms and we've started utilizing all those platforms. We've started using Twitter, Instagram, Google My Business. Google My Business is a very important thing. We haven't used that in the past. We've set that up. I've got some analytics for you guys about that. We've refined the use of Facebook quite a bit. We don't do random posts like we did before. We're very purposeful in what we post on Facebook and how we use it. We've refined the consistency in our messaging platforms and making sure that it's the same message going out everywhere. We also publish PIO office emails and phone numbers, and then we've utilized a website quite a bit for COVID-19 resources and COVID-19 hotline. We stood that up on the phone system pretty quickly, and those are some great resources we've been able to identify and use. We've established a regular review of social media messaging. We have weekly reviews with Elena and myself and Mary Allen. We get together, talk about what's working, what worked and didn't work in the previous week, and what's going to work in the future as well. And we're very strategic in plan what we need to do. Working very hard to do more videos, as much as possible video gives us a lot more feedback from the community and such. And then we review our analytics, like I said. If you take a moment and look in your handout here on this analytic stuff, I wanted to go over some of that stuff with you. The first thing is Google My Business Insights. So this is important for driving traffic to the town's website, and so we stood this up right early on when we got started. It's important for driving traffic to your website as well as ranking you in the Google rankings and such. If you look at the content summary for June 2020, you'll see that over the three quarters, things have grown quite a bit, specifically in the page views. We've increased 10,000 page views, 11,000 page views since we started. At the same time, the other interesting thing is return. We start at 4897, our return is now at 5774. That means people are returning to the town's website, returning to look over things and see what's going on. That's an important aspect to look at. Here's the interesting thing. Elena tells me that most everybody's social media sites have seen a significant decrease with the COVID thing, which doesn't make sense because you'd think with COVID, people would be online more. But she says most of her sites are losing traffic or gaining traffic significantly. And that's a sign that we're starting to do some stuff, right? It's a sign that we needed to do some stuff, but it's also a sign that we're moving forward in the right direction. Talk a little bit about Facebook specifically. If anybody's got any questions while I'm going through this, feel free to interrupt me. We're at 9,913 likes and 9,939 followers. We're coming up on that 10,000 followers mark, and we're going to try to do something special about that. We're talking about some plans for that, but we've increased our users consistently. We have job openings, we've been listing on Facebook as well. We got a great response on that. There's a post I have coming up here that talks about some of that stuff and how we're using Facebook to get some of these entry level jobs filled.
I'll interrupt you there, Todd. Ms. Patrice was brought on to really promote the online HR recruitment side of it, and frankly, it was so overwhelming, the amount of leads that were being generated. It was very successful with the online, because prior to that, we were just doing it just straight from our webpage as well as newspaper ads.
So did we hire her firm or hired her?
Her, $35 an hour.
She's been a great resource. She helped give us direction and helped mold and shape a little bit more about what we're doing and where we're going to be more purposeful and such. And we've increased our engagement significantly, so that's a big thing when somebody posts, you know, Mary Allen and Elena do a great job of responding back to those posts and cross-posting between the different sites we have. And by the way, I should mention, most of the stuff we're talking about is related to the town's information, the town's website, and the town's social media sites. We're not talking about tourism at any level, so. If you look at our, on this piece of paper here, Facebook followers and likes per quarter, you can see that continues to increase. We started at 191 in October through December, we're up to 412 followers in April through June. So we've over doubled that amount in a fairly short amount of time, and I'm hoping to hit that 10,000 mark here fairly soon. Demographics wise, 28% male, 72% female, and of course, the primary area that we serve is the Front Royal area. That makes sense because the stuff we post on the town's website is related to town news in the town of Front Royal. It's not tourism stuff, it's not stuff about the world in general, it's stuff about Front Royal. So Front Royal's the audience that we're trying to attract, and we're attracting that audience. Reactions like shares fourth quarter 2019, you can see some of the highlighted posts, some of the information, these are the highlights that we had throughout that quarter, fourth quarter 19, first quarter 2020, again, those numbers increase, and then again, second quarter 2020 increase again. And you'll notice that June 17th is the highest level of reactions we've had, and you're probably asking yourself, what was the June 17th post? And if you look at the last page of your handout, that's exactly what that post was, and it's pretty neat. We highlighted the trash crew, the solid waste group for what they do, and people just ate it up and really enjoyed what we said. And those guys do a great job, and it's a great acknowledgement for them. They do a tough job, and so that's the post that has garnered us the best reactions so far. On the Facebook top posts on the next page, fourth quarter 19, first quarter 2020, second quarter 2020, you can see what some of those are. You can see what some of those posts are. Here's the interesting thing that we found with Facebook specifically. The posts that get the most reaction are the posts that are positive news or the posts that are really negative news. We don't seem to fall in between anywhere. If you just post something about a power outage, you know, people are interested in it, but that doesn't get us a lot of information, doesn't get us a lot of reaction. So that's something that's caused us to redefine our message. So message we put out on social media, we try hard to give the information that's necessary, but not step into anything that might be controversial. So, any questions about those top posts? Here's some of the posts that you'll see here that we've posted lately. We do a lot of posts, we try to do a post a week specifically about town employees. Those do really well for us, and at the same time, you can see the job application, the job posting on the right, you can see that that 16,270 people reached. That's more than the population of town. So those things are really taking off, those job postings are. We've adjusted the job postings a little bit to make it a little bit easier to apply and to get people directed to the right place.
That's a good point. Early on, we were having problems because we had two systems. Now we're applying and it's going straight into our recruitment system.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then what is your reaction to it? Are you getting applications? Are you getting people coming in?
Yeah. We're getting applications.
I mean, they're actually coming in and saying.
Well, we didn't have 16,000 applications. That's how many people it reached.
I understand, I'm just saying, did you ascertain how many people saw that job application there and said, I'm going in town and?
Yeah, we were having upwards of 9200 applications on certain posts for job openings from time to time. So it is turning into job applications, if that's what you're asking, yes. It's done that well.
How is that prepared to, we're just doing the newspaper or using our online?
I don't have the numbers on that, but it's significantly better.
10x. We get three or four.
Yeah.
I mean, Mary Ellen is the budget department, right?
Yeah, it's been, it's been a game changer for us, for job applications.
Fantastic.
So our engagement.
You know, we can just be able to be more selective and.
Yeah, you have 100 applicants, yeah.
Yeah.
From one position, you can be pretty selective. It probably also helps that they get to see a little bit of the environment and some of the things that other employees are doing, and that builds job satisfaction as well and encourages people to apply, so that's kind of cool.
Yep. Our engagement shows consistent growth. It shows engagement through planned and purposeful efforts. Again, this stuff doesn't happen by accident. I dare say it's almost like brain surgery, trying to think out the right things to do and the right ways to do it. We've got a great team in place. Everything's going exceptionally well, I've been very happy with everybody's help and support, everything from the town manager's office down to Elena and Mary Ellen and myself and everybody in between, even town staff. I'll call them up at the last minute and say, hey, we're going to come take a picture of so-and-so, we're going to use it on Facebook, and they jump right in and happy to help. It's been a great team effort across the entire, across all the staff. Best posts, like I said, our employee highlights, servants' information about water breaks and electrical outage, it doesn't give us as much, but we do post a lot of that kind of stuff. We had electrical outages weekend, we posted about that. And then humorous town-specific related posts. You know, we did, Elena, Mary Ellen does this great job of coming up with these questions about the town of Front Royal and posting pictures of old Front Royal and such, and people eat that stuff up and really seem to enjoy that. So question is, where do we go from here? We're going to continue to do more video. I've got queued up a barbecue review video where myself and a couple of my buddies went and visited three different barbecue places, and we got kind of hammed it up and had fun. We're going to post that here in another week or two. We're going to go out and do it again here next weekend, we're going to shoot another one, just trying to have some fun with it. We're trying to refine our message even more so, trying to figure out exactly what works and what doesn't work and going in that direction. We'll do more employee good job acknowledgements. We have an issue specifically with Facebook taking our posts when we try to boost them and claiming that they're political posts, when they're not, they're a job application. But because we're a government agency, anytime we try to post something, they tag it as a political and won't let us boost it. We continue to jump through hoops to get over that hurdle, but we haven't successfully done that yet. But there are posts that are not political ads or political information that needs to be boosted. We just haven't figured out a way out and overcome that. I guess, you know, with the situation we're in, Facebook's been more vigilant and ever. And again, another important thing is to do more postings beyond Facebook and with other platforms and such. I got to be honest, Facebook is a language I speak a little bit, the others I'm not as familiar with, and that's where Elena and Mary Ellen come in, are very helpful in that regard, trying to learn about where to do that kind of stuff.
Are you staying away from TikTok or whatever that is?
We're not, no, we're not going to TikTok.
What makes yours?
Mary Ellen and I are going to do a dance.
I was going to say.
Talk about TikTok.
I'll record it for you, no problem there. We continue to encourage communication to the PIO office to ensure everybody's voice is heard and consistent messages given. Again, we've started to see more and more of this. When I first started out, Matt was handling most of the communication because he knew what he wanted to say. We've started transitioning, and now the information on the messages is related to a PIO office. I'm starting to get phone calls and emails from the public or responding to those things. I'd do a really great job if I could talk with somebody on the phone, and so a lot of times people will call in and say, what about this, or what about that? We've had people email me and ask that you guys receive information that they have, and I give that to Matt and he turns it over to you all. So we've seen a really great, a small group of people starting to use that more often, use the PIO office more often. We're going to try to leverage some more of that. We're going to use the town's website to leverage a PIO office section. Currently, there's an IT director's place holder, but there's something there for a PIO office. So if you wanted to go to the town's, to address the town's PIO office. So if you wanted to go to the town's, to address the town's P I O office specifically, and you looked on our website, there wouldn't be anything there, so we're gonna make some changes there. We're looking for additional avenues for communication. If more social media platforms arise, that would be appropriate for us to post too. We'll do that. We're looking at a bunch of different things regarding that. And again, we're trying to build a community atmosphere that responds rather than a divisive atmosphere that reacts. If we can, if we can foster that on any level, we're being successful. Conclusion, the bones are in place, the structure's in place, infrastructure's in place, staff has been empowered to do what they need to do. At this point, we're gonna refine our systems and refine our message. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna reach out to contact on Facebook, but you're saying that the town is listed as a government? And is that what it is? I was taking the message, showing me sure I had it right.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, one thing to keep in mind, members of council is, you know, why have this, right? I mean, it's all about improving communications to and from the citizens. And, and getting the information out in the most timely manner, and at the same time, correct information. There's a lot of misinformation that gets disseminated. We had a post today where a business said that the town can't supply them electricity. That's not accurate, the transformer went out. So, you know, it's, it's those kind of things that, and, you know, the good news is, is the, by being, the way we've structured it with Mary Ellen, Elena and Todd, we have three individuals that are primarily focused on just keeping a general eye on our social media, and it's not a, you know, it's not a massive amount of time. It's just, you know, just constant engagement, being focused and being consistent with their messaging. And so, so far, really pleased. It was very, very helpful during the COVID lockdown that we, we were able to disseminate information, and we were, we were just way ahead of many jurisdictions in our, in our region as far as just getting information out to the citizens because we had the structure in place and we've refined it, we're constantly refining it. So, any questions? They do a great job.
Thanks, Todd. I think, I think it's fantastic that we're doing that and long overdue. One, one question about how we're disseminating information or the type of information that we're disseminating. So some of the projects that, that we work on and vote and move forward, are, are we doing any, any kind of work around advancing a positive narrative of some of the things the town's accomplishing that people don't know about or they heard, you know, six months ago that something was gonna happen and, you know, I don't know, off the top of my head, I'm thinking like, you know, even putting it in the redundant water line. I mean, the votes are done and we're moving it forward and it's gonna be a great thing for the town, but are we able to put that out in a positive manner where people hear the right information stuff? You talked about finding that right mix of information, and I know that nobody wants to be inundated with that, but are we working on anything along those lines?
Yeah, so again, the, the idea is how to, you know, what platform to use, how to use it, what to say, what not to say. You know, like, anything, you know, it's like when you read a written word, you can interpret it in any voice that, in the mood you're in. And so it's, it's a little bit tricky, but we are looking at, we, there's, Matt and I had a discussion last week specifically about how to, how to address some of the hot button issues that are going on. Again, that comes into redefine, refining our message and trying to figure out how to deal with that. When somebody, you know, reacts to something on social media, on specifically with the town's website, but others as well, where there's just plain misinformation or misinterpretation going on, we do take the time to correct them when we have access to those systems to do that. Sometimes we can see it, we can't respond to it, but when, when there is misinformation out there, we do address that. And we, like I said, I come in on Monday mornings and I spend my first hour doing nothing but scrolling through what's up this and that, trying to see what information's going on and, and what's happening. And I, I keep an eye on that on a regular basis. Mary Ellen and Elena do the same kind of thing. And, you know, there's been, a perfect example of that is when there was a post that went out specifically about the Fourth of July, I don't know if you saw that or not, where someone had made a, an email, looked like it came from my office, specifically stating some crazy things about fireworks and such. And, you know, I, I had, I had my next door neighbor come across the street and knock on my front door and go, did you, did you do this? And we didn't, and I got really frustrated initially and wasn't real sure how to deal with things and kind of calmed down and caught my breath, and then we came in the next day and put a social media post out that, you know, it wasn't, it was false information, it wasn't accurate, it wasn't true, and, you know, everybody kind of laughed about it. And it was, it could have gone a completely different direction where we're frustrated and angry and upset and somebody else is, you know, feels like they're being attacked, and we really navigated that whole situation well, and it was a great lesson. And luckily I had Mary Ellen and Elena looking at me going, oh, everybody's just having fun, you know, so that helped a lot. We're good team. Anybody else?
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Todd.
You?
Next item tonight is item six, Ufac vacancy.
Still have vacancy for the Urban Forestry Advisory Commission, and if the applications were received, Jason, Jason Lehman has confirmed that Ufac would like, like him to fill the position. On number six, we advertise, but no applications were received.
So what are you saying, one down or two down?
Yeah, one down. Ufac Chairman Jason confirmed that Ufac would like to fill the vacancies.
Not him to fill the vacancy, okay.
So just, you know, anyone?
Readvert that.
Sure.
Try...
Sure, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor, whoever's willing to listen, um, is this be something that Todd should also put on Facebook or a website, like that we're looking for somebody to fill this position?
That's what we just were talking about. You couldn't see our reaction, but, yeah, they were pointing to the board that we can't do that on Facebook through the media with Todd.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do that.
Is that okay, Laura?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's great.
Okay, take closes the actual meeting now, open discussion. Anybody got anything they want to bring up tonight?
I do. So Cloud Street, there's been some work down there and it is terrible. Like you hit it and it's like bum, 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 bum. I think it's in the one hundred block or the two hundred block, I can't remember.
Where's that at?
Cloud Street.
Oh, Cloud, oh.
That's, what's that up, Robbie? Cloud? Yeah, we, and, yes, there's a couple of bad places down right now. We just have so many crews out working, the asphalt crews. We have, how many asphalt crews we have on rolling?
We're six different sewer contractors and they're using a couple of different paving contractors.
Oh, I think he fixed the one on Stonewall.
Yeah.
That was the one I was taking forward.
That was a private, that was a private contractor, and he didn't realize the gravel had gone down so much. And so I was, it brought to my attention Monday night, Tuesday morning Robbie went out and he immediately got out there, got more gravel, put in, and his, the paving company was ten days delayed. So got it paved, got it worked out. So, yeah, I mean, if, if you know, if you know situations like that, you know, by all means, we have a schedule, but if you, you know, if you find situations like that. It was interesting, I've got no phone calls from, I don't get, I don't get any phone calls on the...
Well, Matt, can we, I don't know, I don't know whose process of this, I'm sure it's through Public Works, but can we talk to the foremen of these crews and tell them they need to check those every morning to make sure that the stone is up to asphalt level?
Yeah, we have...
And not have those problems like we had on the phone?
Yeah, we have, we have formed, we have supervisors and managers that, in the mornings, they're driving around, but Robbie and I have been working on a system. Go ahead, Robbie.
Well, as I said, we talked to the C H A inspector last week. It's now every Friday before any of them can leave, he has to go and check all of them.
Yeah, but can, can you just tell the foreman of that crew, whoever's in charge, to make sure they check them?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not up for us to check them, it's up for the contractor to check them, even though we need to check them, but again, that should be the foreman's position to check them themselves because they're the one responsible, basically.
Very good.
So is Todd still here?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I can't see you because of the chair. So I was wondering if it's possible for us to have like a town of Front Royal app where people could report on things like those potholes or the power outages versus making the phone calls or sending emails? It's just a quick little something on an app where they can just report it.
Sure, mobile app?
Yeah.
So we've done two mobile apps in the past. They're very time consuming and very difficult to keep up with. There is actually a town of Front Royal mobile app right now that's due for renewal. We're, we're planning on taking it down, quite frankly, because it's just hard to keep up with. And it's building it in-house. If we wanted to hire somebody outside to take care of it, we could probably do that. It's, it gets a little bit pricey, but to do it in-house has just been, it's just been too much to keep up with. I kind of have to do it myself and I just haven't, like I said, been able to keep up with it.
What about a link to a work order system?
There is, there is links to a work order system on the town's website, but to create a mobile app specifically is a, a kind of a different animal. You have to go through a significant amount of coding.
Can we place on our Facebook page?
We can put something on our Facebook page, absolutely.
And our website's mobile optimized once they click on that.
Yes, it is.
And then we maybe pin that post near the top or put it in files for Facebook so people can find it quickly when they need it.
Yeah, we can do that. I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Awesome.
Perfect forms, could we use that?
Yeah, we could, and we're just stepping in and we're gonna use them for a lot of things.
Yeah, we've, we've got a new, for the CARES Act, for the application process, it's all electronic. We've got a portal. Todd's done a great job, Todd and Grant's done a great job. So we've had this online form system that we could use for a purpose very similar to, to a mobile app, work order.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that as well. That's a great idea.
That's way easier. If I was driving down Cloud Street and then like I stopped somewhere, I can text or, you know, type it in real fast on my phone versus waiting to get home.
Yeah, we have a mobile app that you could actually, you, you could take a picture of it, you had different categories, and you'd take a picture of it and you'd submit that picture with your notes, and it would go directly to Robbie's staff. But it just, it just, it's too hard to keep up with. Not, not the mobile, not that portion of it, but keeping up with all the other stuff involved, security and, and the changes that are happening in the town and stuff, so.
All right, well, thank you.
Yep.
Well, Matt, could you give us a day's on the CARES Act?
Sure. We have, we have, the portal's done. We've, we've been testing it for several days now. We have a meeting with the chamber tomorrow to go over the final, final process, so we're hoping to start advertising Wednesday. That still scheduled?
Yep, that's where we're at.
Start advertising Wednesday and start receiving applications. Was it Monday of next week?
Yeah, February two.
How long?
Two weeks.
Two weeks for the application?
Two, two week window. The system that we have is on a timestamp, so as it goes through the process, so when a business submits, it timestamps it, the business owner will receive a message that you have properly submitted your, your, your form. It goes to an in-house electric department, a finance department employee who's gonna check business license verification and utility balance. Plug that information in, it goes to the CARES Act committee. Again, the business owner will get an email that says you're, you've passed the first review, goes to the second, goes to the team, and then once it gets to the CARES Act committee, they'll dole out, they have a system that they're gonna dole out the, the review process, and they go through, validate. We have a, we have two validators.
Three.
Three, technically, if you count the first one.
Yes.
So the first one validates, second one does the heavy lift, and the third one is just checking on make sure everything's done. What else? Trying to think, any other details missed?
The money transfer.
Yeah, we, we pay for it, we pay for it out of our balance first, and we have to submit an invoice and we'll get reimbursed from the county. We're thinking about doing it probably monthly.
How long does this process probably take?
Tens, I mean, we're hoping, we're hoping probably in four weeks to have it all, all resolved.
Is it a date that we put on there? We put a due date.
Yeah.
And it sort of really depends on how many applicants we get.
Well, I mean, the first application or in the newspaper and everything.
Yeah, we're, for the timeline, we're, we're running a week behind that original timeline, but, but hopefully we're gonna be right back on track. It really depends on how many, how many applications we get, you know, if it's open two weeks or if we end up extending or pursuing other options. But the application process is fairly simple. It's, it's not, we try to condense it down and make it very easy and user friendly. So the application process, I ran through it myself the other night and it took about ten minutes. You know, I didn't have, obviously I didn't have the financial data to upload for the business, but I mean, typing in information is very simple, very user friendly.
And we'll post early on what information's required, so when the site goes on live, you, you can have those people, have paperwork ready to go.
Please gather the following information.
We tried to make the checking, step one was the, our town employee, step two, as you said, was one of the staff or committee members.
And then step three?
Nick is going to be the controller.
Yeah. And then step three will be, there'll be a second, second set of eyes.
And there's constant communication through each step, so the applicant will know exactly whether they're in the, in the application process, which is very nice.
Here's your tab. Excuse me, go ahead, Laura.
Now?
Yes, ma'am.
I just was wondering, what would be, what, how do businesses find out about them? And I, I just, I don't want you, I don't want you to think that's a silly question, but I was talking to a business that I stopped in a week or so ago, and I meant, I knew they had had a hard time through the pandemic, and I said, well, have you considered, you know, have you considered, um, a line through the towns? And they were like, they didn't seem to have any idea what was out. And then I came back the next week and I said, well, did you check into it? And he was like, I don't even know where to check. So do businesses know, do they go to the portal first or...
No, they don't know that yet. They, they will, our plan is to, is to hit various mediums. We're gonna go to, we have radio ads already cut and ready to go, Facebook, I don't know if we're gonna use Twitter or not.
Yeah.
Could use Twitter. We have approximately eleven hundred email addresses for business owners. And then what was the other one? Oh, our town website and of course, press release. So I mean, I, I don't know what more we can do.
No, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good. I just wondered, I just didn't want any business that, you know, maybe would, would be left out because they didn't understand. So that, that sounds like we're definitely...
We haven't hit that date yet, Laurie, until all these portals and everything was in place. Then the press release and all that rolls out, that was the date I was looking for and I couldn't remember.
Yeah, we'll hit it pretty...
I don't have my notes in front of me.
Yeah, we're gonna hit it really hard.
Matt, if, if we have a business that gets, say, fifteen hundred dollars or fifteen thousand dollars, and they go close the doors six, two weeks, three weeks after that, is there any recourse on that?
There's no recourse, but we do have a provision in place for what are your plans for staying open? So we do have that checks and balance. That's a good question, and we did, we've discussed that.
Well, I do, I didn't think we, we could take it back.
Right.
That's what I understood when we had the first meeting with the board supervisors.
We have eleven.
Oh, with dollar amount?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, there's tiered. I don't have the exact...
I don't remember enough.
I don't have the exact tiers.
Top was like 13?
Somewhere around that area.
Yeah.
Top was 13 and the smaller businesses, unless I get the notes in front of me.
Yeah, same area, I don't remember.
But it's going through, that's a big thing.
Yeah, we're in the process.
I thought we, I thought we had scheduled a meeting for next week, the committee's meeting here next week.
Tomorrow, one o'clock.
Yeah. And then we consider when the, it rolls out. We're trying to do it as fast as possible, but you have to have, Todd's work had to be in place first and committee's responsibilities had to be in place before all of this can be rolled out.
Any other questions? If not, last item on our agenda is closed meeting. Your motion.
Paul, you got it.
Awesome. Mary Ellen, you're the town councilor meeting and going to a closed meeting for the following purposes. The discussion of prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of a business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the Town of Front Royal pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A5 of the Code of Virginia. Two, consultation with legal counsel employed by town councilors regarding specific legal matters, namely amending the town code in connection with one above requiring the provision of legal advice by such council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia. Three, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members and or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation without the federal where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the town council. Probable litigation, meaning litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which